I'm going to roll that bean flute. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the November 7th, 2024 meeting of the Dare County Board of Education to order. We're meeting at the Dare County Administrative Building in Manio, and the time is 5:02. If we would take a moment of silence. Thank you. Tonight, I'd like to recognize Ms. Bassnight for being here tonight from the Commissioners. Thank you so much for your support and dedication and showing to our meetings. We do appreciate it. And Mr. Bateman, congratulations, and look forward to swearing you in next month. Now I'll turn it over to Ms. Spencer for pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Spencer. Next item of business is motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the agenda.
Motion on the floor by Ms. Bothwell. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Payne. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Next on the item is public comments. Ms. Hitch, we have any comments?
No, sir. No public comments, ma'am.
Next on the agenda is going to be announcements and recognition. And since I was the board member that was going to be welcome everybody, I figured I'd do this all at one time. Mr. Brower would normally be doing this this month, but he's not able to be with us tonight, and Mr. Wicker either. So I'd like to welcome the community from out there in the world of the YY web, and the residents are here tonight with the board meeting. We do appreciate y'all's dedication and interest of Dare County schools. Without your interest in Dare County schools, we can't make it go in the future. So there again, just want to say thank you. But we do have some recognitions tonight, so if I can, I'm gonna step down just for a few minutes and call them up. Thank you. Mr. Woody, can you come up front, please?
Mr. Woody, for dedication to service as a member of the Dare County Board of Education, December 2020 through December 2024, and appreciation of your commitment and improvement, the quality of education in Dare County schools, and for the many accomplishments achieved under the Board of Educations while you served. So just thank you so much.
Ms. Bothwell.
You as well, Ms. Bothwell, for the dedication service as a member of the Dare County Board of Education from December 2020 through December 2024. With that appreciation and for the commitment to improve the quality of education in Dare County schools, and for the many accomplished achievements under the Board of Education, we thank you so much for your service.
Ms. Balance.
Ms. Balance, for your dedication to service as a member of the Dare County Board of Education from July, from July 2016 through December 2024, and appreciation for your commitment to improving the quality of education for Dare County schools, and for the many accomplishments that was achieved under your board. We appreciate you. And it's hard for us to...
We started this together.
Yes, congratulations. Thank y'all so much.
I would like to finish for the recognitions tonight. Being on a school board is not just showing up tonight for preparing for a meeting. And the words that was on that plaque for the dedication and achievements means a lot, because there's a lot of hours behind the scene. So on behalf of the Chairman of this Board of Education, the dedication and hard work and service y'all done, we do appreciate it for the students and staff of Dare County schools. Mr. Bassnight, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, board members, I have several things that I want to bring to you tonight for announcements and recognitions. First of all, I want to start off and let you know that we have begun our Superintendent's Advisory Council meetings for this year. Each pre-K through 12 schools sends two classified, two parent, and two certified representatives from their school. For our student advisory council, our middle school and high schools send two students, and this year, we've expanded that group to include our student advisors to the Board of Education. Our classified staff advisory council members met on Friday, November 1st, our student advisory council members met on Monday, November 4th, and our parent advisory council members met on Wednesday, November 6th. We will meet with our certified advisory council members on Friday, November 22nd. For our elementary schools, I will be traveling to each of those elementary schools to meet with their student government members and attend one of their meetings to get their input on what we're doing in Dare County schools. Those meetings are extremely fun. It's a great opportunity to listen. It's a great opportunity to get input from outside and see it through someone else's eyes. All of our district administrators attend those meetings, and a lot of that, at the end of every meeting, involves a conversation, just sitting back and listening and asking questions. So we really enjoy that, and I greatly appreciate all of those that have agreed to serve on each of the advisory councils and the information that we gain as a district from those. So thank you. Second thing I want to tell you about is our fire alarm systems. We are currently replacing and upgrading our fire alarm panels in several of our schools. Manio Middle School system has already been replaced, and we are currently awaiting quotes on several of the other schools, including Cape Patterson Elementary School, Manio Elementary School, and Manio High School. We are really, and when you go into buildings, the box is going to look the same, but everything inside that box, the guts, it's totally upgraded. So we're looking forward to bringing those upgrades into our buildings. At the same time, and this has been a big thing, we are going to replace our virtual servers for our school system. These virtual servers are, and also include our backup power supplies for those servers. These servers are the hardware systems that house all the drivers for all the technology in Dare County schools district-wide, as well as our video systems. We are upgrading the hardware and changing our phone service provider to one that can offer us a more modernized platform for our phones. So that's undergoing, that process is undergoing right now. We're actually waiting for some of that to be delivered to us. So if there are issues over the next couple of months where things may come up and die during the day, it's because we're making that shift over. And this is literally everything that drives everything we're doing in Dare County schools. I do have one recognition I want to bring forward tonight that took place last week, and I appreciate Chairman Twitty that came down to Cape Patterson Elementary. Cape Patterson Elementary School's Ms. Beverly Haggy was recognized by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction as the Northeast Region Science of Reading True Trailblazer Award recipient. Ms. Haggy is one of only eight recognitions given statewide for her dedication and systemic approach to improving literacy outcomes for our students. Also, want to recognize our CTE programs tonight, and I think Ms. Shannon Castillo is back in there in the back. Dare County Schools' career and technical education programs have been recognized by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction for their dramatic increase in CTE credential attainment. Dare County Schools ranks eight out of 115 districts in North Carolina and number one in Northeast North Carolina this year. In the last five years, Dare County Schools has increased their CTE credential attainment from numbers in the teens to 79.5%. Dare County Schools' ranking is only four points out of first place. So Dr. Castillo, thank you very much. Currently taking place, the Northeast RESA Leadership Conference is happening at the Hilton Garden Inn in Kitty Hawk. RESA stands for the Northeast Regional Education Service Alliance. The Northeast RESA is made up of the 17 districts in Northeast North Carolina, from Currituck to Roanoke Rapids, and from the Virginia Line all the way down to Beaufort, North Carolina. We also have districts who are attending this conference from across the state and sending their staff members. First of all, I want to say a very special thank you to our Board of Education Chairman, Mr. David Twitty, for making it this year again and showing up at the opening ceremony this morning for this conference. And I'm telling you right now, there is one board chairman in this entire conference, and the banquet room is full at the Hilton Garden Inn. So it really says a lot for Dare County that our board chairman shows up for this, and it's recognized by the people in here. I also want to recognize our Dare County Schools' technology staff, who historically and continue to this year, provide technical support for this conference while it's going on. This outstanding conference, right here in our own backyard, consists of general keynote sessions, followed by a great variety of professional learning breakout sessions led by regional educators, university personnel, NCDPI staff, and administrators. To be a presenter at this conference, educators, colleges, and vendors must apply to the Northeast RESA Superintendent's Council to be considered. I am extremely proud to say that Dare County Schools staff presented five of the 31 sessions, including Manio High School staff, Ms. Suzanne Pack and Ms. Emily DiNoto, presented on best practices for note-taking in high school; district administrators, Katie Spruill, Reese Lambert, Denise Fallon, and Holly King, presented on enhancing instructional excellence through the Teaching and Learning Facilitator Network; First Flight High School's administrative team of Joe Tyson, Sam Reynolds, Sarah Pritchard, and Katie Blanchard, presented on classroom management; Dare County Schools counselors, Deanna Thornley and Amanda Songer, presented on "I'm All Shook Up", Now What, helping students and adults emotionally regulate; and Mr. Curtis Price, sitting there in the back, will be presenting tomorrow for Manio Elementary School on Rise Up with the Three Rs: Rigor, Relevance, and Relationships. I got to attend several of these presentations today, and I could not be more proud and excited about the level of knowledge and professionalism that we have here in Dare County. And I want to say thank you and congratulations to each of you who are presenting. The last thing I want to tell you about is I pulled some numbers. I had Ms. Khalid to go and pull some numbers for us on our breakfasts and lunches. Since the changeover, in comparison to our numbers for last year, we are on breakfasts in elementary school. We're up 32% on the number of breakfasts, and that comes out to about 167 more breakfasts a day. At middle school, we're up 45, 46%. That's an additional 52, 53 lunches, breakfasts per day at middle school. And in high school, we are up 77.8%, and that's an increase of 81 breakfasts in high school a day. Overall, in our district, we are up 40% for breakfasts, and that's an additional 301 breakfasts per day. For lunches, we are up, in elementary school, we're up 11%, and that's an additional 107 lunches per day. In middle school, we're up 23, 23 and a half percent. That's an additional 98 lunches a day. And in high school, we're up 30%, and that's an additional 154 lunches a day. And overall, in the district, that's an average of, we're up 19% district-wide, or we're serving an additional 359 lunches a day. So those numbers, and I had Khalid to go back and look at that to see how that sort of leveled out historically. We've not served 1,000 breakfasts since 2006, and we're at 1,038. And our highest breakfasts have been 750. Lunches have increased over 350 a day. And since the early 2000s, when we were serving about 2,500 lunches a day, that number right now is at 2,251. So we're closing in on what are our all-time highs for students eating in our cafeteria. So just wanted to share that information with you.
Question.
Yes, ma'am.
How about applications for the free and reduced, like...
I don't have those numbers, the free and reduced applications, but they're...
A lot more coming in.
Yes, ma'am.
The applications are coming in.
Yes, ma'am.
Good.
Yes, ma'am. Like I said, I got her to give us that so I could bring that up to you today, but I'll check on that and get some numbers on those applications. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Bassnight.
Yes, sir.
Next on the agenda is student advisor. Mr. Emerson?
It's from the schools in my district. First up, Kitty Hawk Elementary School. We continue to catch the wave of kindness at KHES. Students wrote kind notes to students in Western North Carolina, and a helpful parent made sure they were sent. Parent and community events at KHES in October included Walk and Bike to School Day and our Family Pumpkin Book character display in the media center. Fun pumpkins were judged by staff, students, and members of our local police department. Our Red Ribbon Week included Spirits Days to celebrate making healthy choices. Our traditional Fall Carnival hosted by our PTO was a fun family event with staff and parent volunteers making it happen. Our book fair included a parent shopping evening, and we ended the month with the Cutest Kindergarten Bilingual ABC Fashion Show. Next up, First Flight Elementary. First Flight Elementary has had lots of October activities for our students and families. Our Literacy Night on October 10th was a hit. They have had over 100 families come and attend this event and learn more about how they can support their child's literacy growth at home. On October 17th, Jonathan Miller, the author of The Adventures of Sammy the Dachshund, came to speak to their students to show them real-world examples of how to write and publish a book. First Flight Elementary also had an amazing trick-or-treat night sponsored by their PTO on Saturday, October 26th. Staff decorated the hallways and dressed up. Students came to FFES to trick-or-treat, do the cakewalk, or maybe buy an activity with a staff member at our silent auction. The haunted house tradition has come back to his event, and PTO families did an amazing job creating a fun and spooky haunted house. A great night was had by all as we came together as a school community. Next up, First Flight Middle School. This past month at First Flight Middle School, we have focused on community. We've brought the community into school and spent time out in the community making a difference. First, we had a coin drive and collected more than $500 to send to those affected by Hurricane Helene in Western North Carolina. Our chorus teacher, Mr. Buford, and his mating students held their first concert titled "Harmonies of Hope" to celebrate life, strength, resilience, and hope in our community to honor cancer survivors. Our band took a quick trip over to Spring Arbor and play a concert on the lawn for the residents. Our 7th and 8th grade avid students took a trip to Seaway to be dolphins for a day. They attended classes and utilized the note-taking strategies they have learned to participate in class. Lastly, our librarian, Ms. Brinkley, organized a Veterans Day celebration by inviting veterans to our school for a day. They got to share what Veteran Day means, what Veterans Day means to them, and share their experiences. Next up, First Flight High School. We are excited to celebrate some recent successes. Mr. Buford and our chorus delivered an incredible concert nearly filling the David Oaksmith Auditorium. Additionally, our CTE and Student Services Departments host a fantastic college fair, welcoming colleges from all over and engaging our students in planning their futures. We're also thrilled to recognize our women's tennis team for their accomplishments in the state playoffs. Congratulations to Coach Chip Rose and his team. And finally, a huge congratulations to our men's and women's cross-country teams for finishing first in district and regional championships. Kudos to Coach Jessica Foles for an outstanding season. Thank you.
Good evening, board. I'm Toby Fleckenstein. I'll be reading the district highlights from my district. First up is Nagshead Elementary School. Our Nagshead Elementary School Pumpkin Fair was a hit on October 18th. Students and their families enjoyed a night of fun at NHES and hosted a Young Entrepreneur Event at Doughty Park during the fair. One 5th grade student, Olivia Tonkinson, set up a special booth at the Entrepreneur Event to collect donations for Hurricane Helene relief. She received $200 in donations, along with many needed items for the families of Western Carolina. Thank you, Olivia. In other news from NHES, staff members are sharing their knowledge and expertise during staff meetings. Members of the school improvement team and the leadership team are providing hands-on professional development opportunities at each staff meeting. Staff members consult with the administrative team, but plan and lead the entire meeting for staff. So far, we've had a professional learning centered around technology and sheltered instruction observation protocols, SIOP, strategies. NHES has also implemented a volunteer menu for families. Using the Sign Up Genius app, parents can review the monthly needs of our school and sign up for opportunities that they would like to volunteer for during the school day. Surf up. Dive in at NHES. Next is Manio Elementary. Most recently at Manio Elementary School, they were offered, they were able to offer the first of three series of professional development tailored to one of our student improvement goals, where they planned and facilitated a day-long vertical, virtual planning session for K through 12, K through 2, and 3 through 5 teachers. The feedback they received from our staff was outstanding and thus supported their NC Teacher Working Conditions Survey. Likewise, they've been successful implementing pre- and post-tests aligned to standards in grades 3 through 5 for ELA and math. And based on initial quarterly results, they've also been able to see how data can be a flashlight for quarterly results, oh, for student growth, which has also allowed the instructional team to be more intentional in celebrating both student and teacher successes across grade levels. Also, teachers and students are truly enjoying the number sense component of Bridges, called Numbered Corner. Last but not least, at parent teacher conferences on Friday, November 1st, the leadership team intentionally connected with families through Coffee with the Principal as parents entered and exited the building so that they could gain family feedback through a Title I Needs Assessment Survey. Next is Manio Middle School. The Manio Middle School soccer team are conference champions. They were celebrated with a pep rally with their peers. Librarian Carrie Hausnig received a grant for MHS for $1,200 from the NC Aquarium Society for Scholars. Their PTO celebrated their staff with a coffee and pastry breakfast, which was donated by local businesses. Next is Manio High School. The Manio High School gym was a buzz as our students had the opportunity to speak directly with representatives from a variety of colleges. Our student athletes participated in our first High Five Friday of the year at Manio Elementary School. We also held our first theater production of the year with And Then There Were None. In sports, our tennis team came second in the conference and went to the third round of the state playoffs as a team. Our tennis doubles teams went to state finals. The MHS soccer team is in the state playoffs and cross-country competed in the state championship. Our volleyball team had a phenomenal season and made it to the Eastern Regional Finals amongst huge community love and support. The National Technical Honor Society participated in NC Crunch, a program to celebrate agriculture in North Carolina by surprising MHS teachers with an apple bar. Last but not least, we enjoyed a successful homecoming. Thank you.
My name is Spencer Twyford, and I'll be reading the highlights from the Hatteras District. Starting with Dare Learning Academy. Dare Learning Academy is proud to celebrate four students who made the principals list and nine honor roll students for quarter one. Next up, Cape Hatteras Secondary School. Cape Hatteras Secondary School is preparing for the opening night of the North Carolina Preview of Harry Potter and the Cursed Child, beginning November eighth at seven P M. The play will run through two weekends with six shows. Tickets are available at C H S S, United Bank, and the Froggy Dog Restaurant. Additionally, our Veterans Day Ceremony is being held on Friday, November eighth at ten o'clock in the gym. We recently celebrated our running canes as they advanced to the state competition. We are proud of their successful season. The National Honor Society hosted a very successful blood drive on Thursday, October thirty-first. We appreciate all those who came out and gave blood. Finally, twenty-five high school students participated in a workshop with North Carolina poet laureate Jackie Shelton Green, courtesy of the Bryant Culture Series, and were captivated by her presentation and renewed their excitement for writing. Thank you to all those on the Bryant Culture Series who made this possible for our students. And lastly, Cape Hatteras Elementary School. The Cape Hatteras Elementary School P T O hosted a delightful Charlotte's Web-themed Fall Festival that brought the beloved children's story, Our One School, One Book, to life. Students and families enjoyed a variety of engaging activities, including a petting zoo, festive hayrides, face paintings, and an array of games and activities, creating an immersive and educational experience for all. This well-organized event not only fostered a sense of community but also encouraged literacy and creative, and creativity among the students, making it a resounding success for the Cape Hatteras Elementary School community.
Thank y'all so much for the update from each school. I appreciate it. And Mr. Twyfer, thank you for stepping in, reading for the Hatters and the Dare Learning Academy. Thank you so much. At this time, we're just gonna take a short recess. We'll call the meeting back to order. Next on the agenda is approval of the consentment, the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Ms. Balance. I have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Woody. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Consent agenda's been approved. Next, I'd like to bring Mr. Ian Adams up, since you're gonna be working with Mr. or Ole Coler, Coller, that is, Oakley Coller, to give us information and our first report on the Early College, which we know there'll be many reports to come in the future. So Ian, if you...
Uh, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. President, I wasn't ready for this part. But I will make it real easy. I'll just turn it right over to Tim. That's good. And he's got a PowerPoint he submitted for us, and I believe Tim is online now.
I am here.
There you go.
Could you hear me?
Yes, sir. We hear you.
Oh, perfect.
All right. Did you have a PowerPoint? Is it? Okay. Your PowerPoint's up. You're ready to go.
Okay, so um we cannot see the PowerPoint, so I will... Uh Ian, you'll have to be my eyes, I guess.
I can do that.
And, and are you looking at the exterior rendering? I'm sorry, first one?
Yep, slide one.
Well, we, we appreciate the opportunity to be with you, albeit virtual, and I think John Ham is on here as well, and we're struggling a little bit with the connections, but we will walk through. What we wanted to do tonight is bring you up to date on where we are with the Early College. As you may know, the Dare County Board of Commissioners, they selected the general contractor this past Monday, and so they're starting the process of pricing the plans. But tonight, we wanted to walk through the overall plans with you, show you a couple of interior renderings, take any feedback you might have, and see if we can keep pressing forward with the project. Again, the, the goal was to match as much as we could to the existing building on the C O A campus. So the image that you're looking at, Ian, are they looking at the exterior?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so there's two of those. If you go to the second one, you'll see that it pretty well matches the overall look of the other building on the campus. The next slide, I believe, is the site plan that will show you the position of the building on the campus. We basically reworked all of the parking lots, added additional parking on the side of our building, as well as redesigned the existing parking to the east, and then created some additional parking over near the ball fields and the skateboard park that's there that would meet all the necessary jurisdictional zoning requirements for parking on the campus. The next slide, I believe, is the floor plans, first and second floor. The, the floor plans, we work with school staff, Denise and others, working through all of the necessary needs of the kitchen, as well as the educational space. We've created, the building has certainly a number of doors, but we've got one central key point of entry that everybody who enters the building has to go by and get released in by the office area of the building. The second floor is, is all classrooms throughout the building. You'll notice that there's two stair towers on the building. They are both open. In other words, they're not enclosed in a private-type stair tower. They are open to the main corridors for visibility. And it just really works better for everyone to, to be able to circulate vertically as well as see whatever activity is going on within the space. The next series of slides are the interior finishes that we are proposing for the building. Um we, we took a little different approach. We wanted to certainly incorporate the school system's colors, but also kind of upgrade the overall feel of the interior to a higher level, more on a college-level interior approach, but also be respectful for the, where we, where we are. We are the coast. So we've incorporated colors throughout the finishes, whether it be the terrazzo floor that has bands of color, and you will see on one of these interior slides, and Ian, you may have to just kind of click through as I talk, that we've incorporated sea turtles and jellyfish and some other laser-cut items into the floor to kind of give it a little bit of a playfulness and some liveliness to, to the building. All the colors are somewhat lighter in tone. The wood tones that we have are a little less, more light than dark. We've also, where we have glass, we've included a band of, let's call it out-of-focus glass, that you can't see a hundred percent through it. It gives you blurred images, so there affords some privacy within those spaces of the building. Um Ian, are you to a point where there's an interior rendering?
Uh, we're, we're at the floor, we're on stairwell. There you go.
Okay, so on the stairwells, you, you'll see that's where we open them to the, to the big circulation space. We've also included a mural on the wall that, again, to create some liveliness and color within the building itself. Um you can click through the next couple of renderings. There's one for the lobby when we walk in, and you're looking into the dining area and into the general, the general openness of the lobby. In an earlier version, we had enclosed the dining room. In conversation with, with the staff, we decided that opening that up afforded us the opportunity to use it throughout the day for, for meetings, sitting, open sitting, and not just the interior dining-type space. I believe in the meeting we had as a group a few weeks ago, there was some conversation that I think the community college system may try to incorporate some culinary classes with the kitchen, since it is a full-service kitchen. It would lend itself to, to that activity. Then I think we, the final slide in that group is one of interior, the office area, and you'll see the, kind of the blurred glass to your left, and of course, there is a counter for anyone to come in and be checked into the school itself. Um the building is about twenty-five thousand seven hundred square feet, and it fits rather nicely on, on the property. I think we've incorporated all of the teaching areas that the, the school system wanted. And we also have an interior, a lab space that will be used by the students in any of the type, biology-type labs that need chemistry hoods, or excuse me, exhaust hoods. Those spaces would be used over in the other part of the campus that exists on the C O A campus. John Ham, anything that you want to add that I may have glossed over here?
No, I think you covered most of it.
Um, I, I know that was kind of a, a brief overview, but I think we, we will leave certainly the, the presentation with you, and we'd love to address any questions or concerns you might have.
Tim, thank you. This is David Twitty. Is there any questions for Tim with the presentation we received first today? No questions? It's very, very nice, very well done, Tim.
Thank you.
Very excited, moving forward and hearing more updates on this for us. And just to let the board know that they will be back to meet with the county's C I P on November the twelfth at ten-thirty. So they have another follow-up meeting with the county's C I P.
Can I get a copy of that presentation here?
Yep. Tim, thanks again. I appreciate that. And Ian, thanks for...
Well, thank, thank y'all for the opportunity and sorry for not being there in person, but circumstances just didn't work out.
We certainly understand.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Y'all, have a good evening.
You too. Thank you, Ian.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Sorry to get you under the gun there, but you did a good job. Not Vanna White, but you done good. Ms. Holler, you ready to come give us an update on technology in Infinite Campus? Ms. Holly King's next on the agenda. Welcome.
Good evening. This one is going to be quick. Erin, if you could advance it to the next slide, that'd be great. So as you already know, Infinite Campus is our new student information system that we launched in August for all of our families. I would be, I really need to give a hats off to our data managers and all of the support staff that we have at the school level, because I am very proud to say that of our five thousand students, we have less than ten without a parent portal account associated with a parent or guardian that supports them, so. That is a tremendous, tremendous applause for the people at the building level who have worked tirelessly to make sure that our students are connected and that our families have access to the valuable resources that are in this tool. And so we, we've intentionally rolled out this platform in two phases. So what you see on the screen right now is what we rolled out at the beginning of the year. They were the nuts and bolts that we had to have to get the school year started. So for instance, we had to have academic performance, so we had to have our teachers trained on how to use the gradebook and how to communicate with families, how students were doing in the classroom. So we made sure that was intact with the minute that students walked into the building. We had to make sure that we had assessments available, so that's partially on us, but also partially on D P I. Those historical assessments that students take, like E O Cs and E O Gs, those are being loaded daily. And so we'll have that historical data that we can lean into to better support students. Attendance. We had to make sure that our data managers, our front desk receptionists, and our teachers knew how to do attendance. And so that's part of the platform that's up and running, and the great part about that is that it's in real time. Behavior. This was a big shift. Prior to Infinite Campus, we utilized a separate platform for behavior. We stepped away from that platform, which was financially responsible, since this platform includes it, and then that allows us to have all of the student information in one spot. Why is that valuable? Because this particular system has some built-in machine learning, which allows it to integrate things like attendance, academic performance, behavior, all into one place, which allows us to identify students who might need more support. That's not something that the previous system allowed to us, and so that's an example of how this one is more modern. Lastly, the one that I want to point out is communication. We also stepped away from Blackboard, which was our previous mass communication system, because this one has a communication tool within it. What does that do? It allows all of our teachers to use that tool as well. Previously, that tool was isolated for principals, district leadership, and maybe a couple of earmarked people at the building level. Now teachers can send texts to family members that says, hey, your student's missing assignments, or I have an attendance concern with your child, or your kid did great on today's assessment. That, in the last system, teachers didn't have that access to communicate with, with families outside of traditional Gmail. So that's where we are in phase one. I also want to give a huge shout-out to Hannah, because Hannah Nash, our Public Information Officer, has done a tremendous job of making sure that we have resources for families on our website, and that is up-to-date and stellar. It's been recognized at the state level as a model of how to do it. So where are we now? Phase two. Now we're starting to dabble into the advanced features that are available on this platform. I have an exhaustive list here, because we are slowly rolling these out in buildings. Many times, we're rolling them out in one building so we can work out some of the kinks before we roll it out in another building and then across the district. Want to highlight a couple today that are really exciting. One is the fourth bullet down. That's the digital check-in and checkout. What that means is that when a student walks into the building, they simply type... that when a student walks into the building, they simply type in their student number or scan a card, because our little people don't know their student numbers. Our student numbers are what, 10 numbers long in some cases? Yeah, our little people don't know that. So, they get a little luggage tag with a barcode. And then what happens is they, if they're late, if they need to leave early, they're digitally clocking, or essentially clocking in and clocking out. That means that the attendance is updated in real time, instantaneously. That's saving our office staff hours of work and sometimes the painful challenge of reading a clipboard on someone's handwriting that might be a little bit difficult. And so, we're really excited. We've rolled that out in two buildings already. It's going beautifully, and the rest of the buildings are soon to follow. So, coming soon to a building near you. In one of our buildings, we're getting ready to pilot an electronic hall pass. So, what that is, is you remember how, I know you've heard of situations where there are 17 students in the bathroom at the same time. How did that even happen? Well, when I'm class, when I'm teaching, I don't necessarily know how many students are currently have a pass to go to the restroom. And if 10 teachers all let two students go to the bathroom at the same time, now you have 20 students wandering around in the hallway. What an electric hall pass does is it allows principals and leadership teams to put a limit on how many students can be in spaces in the building that aren't their classroom. So, they could say, "Well, we can have 10 students in the library. We can have four students in this restroom." And so, when a student goes in and requests a hall pass, it won't let them have it if we already have four people using that hall pass. So, it allows us to minimize the number of students in the hallway and really protect instructional time. So, that's being piloted in one of our buildings shortly, and then if other buildings are interested in utilizing that feature, we'll launch it there, too. The last one is really exciting, and it is Responsive Schedular. So, what Responsive Schedular is, and maybe our First Flight High School friend can reference this when he speaks later on this evening. In our secondary schools, we have what's called a flex time. And so, what that means is that's a time where students get additional support. They might get enrichment, or they may have an opportunity to meet with a club, meet with a teacher, whatever it is their academic need is, whether that's identified by the teacher or identified by the student at that time. So, what happens is, historically, we've used spreadsheets, you know, grab the kid, use a note, use some dated paper pencil method. This platform allows us to, teachers can go in and create offerings. Basically, they're creating a class that exists for one day. So, if I'm a math teacher, I can go in and I'm going to say, "I'm going to have math tutoring today for my Algebra I students." Okay? The teacher then says, "Ooh, these five kids missed class last week because they had an athletic event. They need to make up their test. I'm going to claim those students to come to me." So, now those students are assigned to me, and I can put a little bit of a little note, and I can, I'm going to pick on you, Emerson. I'm going to say, "Emerson needs to come to me because he needs to make up his test." And so, Emerson knows he's not in trouble. He says, "Yeah, I missed the test. I was at the cross-country meet." And so, he knows, "I'm going to go there. I'm going to prepare for my test. There's a little note." Emerson really doesn't have a choice that day. He has to come see me. But now, what can happen also in this platform is the students who are not claimed, they can choose where they want to go. And so, at a certain number of days, which is decided at the building level, before that particular date, the students, it opens up for students, and they can pick where they want to go. They may want to go and get extra help from a teacher, and if that teacher has available space in her classroom, they can go. They may want to go to the library, because the librarian's doing something really fun that day, or they might want to go watch film with their coach. They can't go watch film with their coach if they have to make up a test. You see, academics first. And so, what's awesome about this, there's several things. One, it's giving students voice and choice. They have an active role. So, if they've been, if they're stuck in math class, because they're maybe not doing what they're supposed to be doing, they're seeing all the things they could be doing. So, that's exciting, and that's motivating. The second thing that we're seeing is that teachers are being really creative in what they're offering with academics first. So, the building that this is currently being piloted in is First Flight High School, they're putting academics first. So, they're required to offer three to four academic experiences a week with enrichment and more fun things that are spread out throughout the week. So, there's always something academic. There's always something fun for students to choose from. So, it's been a lot of fun to watch that evolve every time. Anecdotally, what Mr. Tyson has told us is that the grades that students are getting in their classes is going up. The number of students that have poor performance in class is going up, because the students are getting the academic support they need immediately. So, grades are going up, attendance is going up. He said he's less than 10 students that are not claimed each day, that don't have a spot to go, and it's usually because they had a technology glitch, or they just forgot. They were absent the day before. And so, out of what, 890, 900 students?
Eight hundred and eighty-two.
Eight hundred and eighty-two students. There are 10 that aren't, that don't have a spot to go.
And actually, the first day, it was three.
Yeah, the first day, it was three. And here's what's even more awesome. Parents can see this. So, parents can see if their student is claimed to go to math class and why. Or, they can see, "You had a math test today, but you spent your fly time in the gym playing basketball. I hope you performed well on your math test." Completely visible to parents, which is really, really exciting. So, we're getting great feedback from that, and we're hoping to scale that to more schools as they're ready to launch it. So, a host of other ones. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. I just wanted to give you a quick highlight and pulse check about where we are with the new platform.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. King?
No questions, but it seems like it's working really well. That's very impressive.
It is. It's really exciting. And I also need to give a big shout-out to Mr. Tyson and his team, because it is my understanding in talking with folks at DPI that we are the first school to roll out Responsive Schedular. So...
Awesome.
Do you like it, Emerson?
Uh-oh.
Since we put you on the spot, let's go ahead and...
I was giving you time.
You can just get up and use the one...
You can come up here if you'd like.
I don't have fly time, so I don't know, but Skylar, you don't say?
I do have fly time. Today, because of the meeting that we went to on Monday, I missed an exam in my math class, and so I decided to take it upon myself to claim my math teacher today and kind of catch up on my math work. So, I did that today.
Do you find it easy to use?
I really do. It is actually really easy to use.
Awesome.
Very cool.
Thank you, Skylar.
I also have to make up a math test, so your analogy was pretty accurate.
I didn't know. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. Next on the agenda is Ms. Denise Stone, I mean, Miss Fallon, with the Chamber of Commerce Leadership. Update.
Thank you. And I just wanted to follow up one thing. So, our, we have that intervention time at our middle schools and also at Manio High School and Cape Hatteras Secondary School, and they have a different management system. So, we're really excited about using what's in Infinite Campus, again, so that we can communicate with parents. That's a whole different level. So, we're excited about that. I'm here just to give you a quick report about an amazing opportunity coming to us and our students from the Outer Banks Chamber of Commerce. Last spring, Karen Brown, the president of the chamber, reached out to Shannon Castillo and I to kind of ask if we would like for students to be involved with one of the programs that they have, their Leadership OBX. And what they do is they invite business people from throughout the Outer Banks to be on a team. It's a limited number, to study leadership, and also to visit different industries, if you will, throughout the Outer Banks. It lasts for about a year, and they actually got the idea. They saw our student board members, and it kind of sparked some interest. So, we pitched that to our CTE person that handers our student internships. So, we have three students right now that are serving their internships as members of that team. I actually am on that team as well this year. I signed up to participate because I figured I could not ask students to do something that I didn't know what it was. So, we met, we've had two sessions. Our first session was to study leadership for two days on a Sunday and a Monday. And then yesterday, we had our first visit to economic, to study economic development in Dare County. We actually visited Wanchee's, Bayless Boat Works, O'Neill Seafood. We went over to the Ferry Division, and we went to the airport here in Manio and some other places. Our next visit will be to look at healthcare on the Outer Banks. We also will partner with them to study, look at education in Dare County. So, a little bit of everything, travel and tourism. So, it's really interesting. Some really great opportunity for our students. And so, I just wanted to give a shout-out to the three students that are doing that. Kylie Carter's our student from Manio High School, Caroline Fuller, who's one of our student board members, has taken advantage of that internship from Cape Hatteras Secondary School, and Josh Mouser from First Flight High School. So, really excited about what they have to offer. And I will tell you that everybody on our team, I think it's about 25 or 30 people, is just so impressed with our students so far and what they bring to the team. So, I look forward to coming back in the spring after we do all of our visits. And was it yesterday? We had, oh my God, I was so tired. We just did so much, but I learned so much, and that was just the first day. So, I'm really excited, and our kids are excited, too. So, just wanted to give you that update and know that there will be more to come in the spring when we finish this up. So, thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions?
Yep, perfect.
Thank you, Ms. Fallon. Next item is unfinished business, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Hitch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. These are second readings of proposed policies that have been through your policy committee process, and I didn't receive any questions on them, I don't think.
Ms. Balance, you want to have any comments?
These are the ones that we had gone over. I mean, we've looked at them a couple times. It's been out to the board through email. I think I didn't hear any feedback. It was so, it's the recommendation of the committee that we approve on second read.
So, we have a motion to adopt the policy manual updates as presented.
Silvo.
Motion by Mr. Woody, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Bothwell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The policies have been adopted. Next item is Ms. Katie Spruill to come up and give us information on the Kitty Hawk Elementary School's donation request.
Good evening, Board, Chair Twitty, and the rest of the board, and Mr. Bassnight. So, Kitty Hawk Elementary School has a request in their PTO is anticipating to have about a $30,000 donation throughout the year, and so that exceeds the $5,000 limit. And so, they are just requesting that you approve that donation. It has not been, it has not occurred yet, but that's what they are anticipating it to be.
What the board could do is when you know what it's for, you could approve the donation up to $30,000.
So, I can tell you what they have it earmarked for, or like what they're planning. So, they have around $10,000 for instructional supplies, which will be provided to each teacher and grade level, reoccurring instructional materials and support, PBIS items, classic news, that'll be about 8,000, special requests for drums, whiteboards, et cetera, it's about 6,000, and then PTO-initiated activities that support students. It will be about 3,000 is what they're anticipating.
Another option, Mr. Chair, if the board wants to, is you could give the authority to the superintendent to approve this as they come in.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I think, I'd make a motion. We give the authority on, for Kitty Hawk, for the proposed 30,000, authority to the superintendent to approve as received.
Motion on the floor by Ms. Balance.
Second.
Second by Ms. Bothwell. Any further discussion?
Not to exceed 30,000.
Not to exceed 30,000.
Got it.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kitty Hawk appreciates it.
I'm sure they do. Next item on the agenda is the letter that was forwarded to you from the Dare County Community Housing Task Force. It's an application to our state, our home initiative. Mr. Payne, would you like to make some comments on this, since you're our leader on this task force?
Yeah, it's a group from Raleigh that has education and finances. You have to be, you have to apply, be approved. And if we don't approve, I mean, if we don't apply, we may not, obviously, we wouldn't get approved. So, we're going to go ahead and put that application forward. There'll be five members of the task force that will attend five meetings. This is going to help the task force go through the complicated process of task force and affordable housing. So, will we receive the money? Not sure, but if you don't apply, yes, you won't get it. So, we're going to definitely apply.
Talking with Ms. Creve, Ms. Donna Creve, she did mention to me that it could take up to 18 months. So, it is a lengthy process, and they're reaching out to each town as well. They're just not coming to the commissioners or the Board of Education. They're reaching out community-wide to get that support. So, what I'm here tonight is to ask the authority to sign this letter that has been drafted for the Dare County Board of Education to submit on behalf of the task, Housing Task Force.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we give the board chair permission to provide a letter of support on behalf of Dare County Board of Education for the Dare County Community Housing Task Force application as requested.
Have a motion on the floor by Mr. Payne.
Second.
Second by Ms. Balance. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We'll get that taken care of very soon. Next item, Mr. Eden. Mr. Adams is going to be going over some information about a current lease that's been sent to us for the First Flight High School baseball field. So, Mr. Adams?
All right. Good evening, again. I think me and Katie are playing tag up here. A little background information. The owners of a baseball team franchise in the Old North State League have requested to lease the First Flight High Baseball Stadium for approximately, from approximately June 1st, 2025, till July 31st, 2027. Draft lease is attached and will be finalized upon the establishment of a legal entity, the owners of the team. So, the recommendation is superintendent recommends the board give permission to the superintendent to sign the lease agreement upon the establishment of a legal entity by the owners of the team participating in the Old North State League, and for this lease waiving policy 5035 in lieu of this lease.
Does everybody understand 5335? That's a policy that we currently have, that anyone that leases the, or rents that, it was only for one year?
If only for one year. They have to renew it each year.
Yes. So, it's a request that we waive that policy for this one venue only.
Does this mean that on, from June 1st to July 31st, nobody can use that field except for them? Or is this going to coincide with any current baseball schedules or possible baseball schedule?
Right. That lease has attachments that aren't filled in yet for their schedules, and their schedule is during that July, June to July timeframe. That's the only time they will actually be out there. They may be earlier practicing, but just like we did for Manio High School, they have, the season is midsummer.
We've done it twice. We've done it originally first with First Flight High School and the Dare Devils. And then, from that point, we then, a couple of years ago, went with agreement with Manio High School, because the Dare Devils wanted to move the venue from First Flight High to Manio High. So, but that was a year-to-year lease.
So, we haven't waived the policy before?
Not that I'm aware of.
No. So, this, the owner was the operator of that other league, CPL league. This is more of a franchisee, and discussed with Old North State that it typically is a five-to-10 year leases, kind of helps entice the owners to bring, to put the money in, to bring the teams in, and we settled on three years to make it advantageous for the owners to actually invest in the team and the community. in the team and the community.
So what's the pleasure of the Board?
Oh, I'm not a fan of changing the policy, frankly. I think it would set a precedent that could end up being a problem down the line.
My concern is, is it going to prevent our kids in Dare County from being able to use the field? I understand during the times of the games, that, that goes without saying. But if, if they want to do, if the high school, the high, baseball, high school baseball team wants to do something, is it going to prevent them from having access to that field?
Absolutely not. It takes no priority over us. We still maintain priority and we'll sort that all out with their schedule because they'll submit that to me at the beginning of each year.
Okay, so what if, then what, so I know we have a pretty strong Babe Ruth league that, in Kitty Hawk and?
They don't use that.
They don't use that field.
And also remember now with this, oh, not we, but the Commissioners have done a lot of work behind First Flight Middle and First Flight Elementary Schools, facilities, put multiple fields available and currently bringing the baseball and softball field up to specs. So those two fields have not been used for many years. This year will probably be the first year that those two fields will be used. So they will actually add two, two fields for the county.
So we don't know how many games they have scheduled yet?
Oh, we, we don't. Just like the high schools, they'll establish their schedules typically once the team's established, but we saw with CPL that, we saw schedules come out late May.
Well, maybe we should wait until they come up with a schedule.
They're not going to come up with a schedule until they know they can do what they want to do.
True.
Yeah.
I get what you're trying to do. I'm just not so sure I'm ready to give away what that looks like.
Well, historically with CPL and from talking to the, some of the Vice President of Old North State, what we've seen in the past is the high school coach is typically the summer league coach.
So who, what is the age group of the kids, of the people playing in this, in this league?
It's a college prep. It's kind of the way it goes out most of the time. So you?
So this isn't like a pro team? This is like a college or a high school? These are going to be high school kids?
High school or first year college. First year college.
Are they going to be some of our kids?
Absolutely. If?
That makes it different.
Yes.
Agreed. I think that makes it a little different.
Old North State and Coastal Plains League have brought in and put out some minor league and Old North State has a few that they tout as major league players have come through that program.
Sounds like the, what it reminds me of was in 1996 when we had the World Babe Ruth Baseball Tournament, Manio High School.
Absolutely.
And they used that facility basically all summer long for training and then also for the World Series. So that sounds like, that's what's taken place.
I just remember when it was the Daredevils, it was, we had some problems.
We had some issues.
When we first got on the Board, it was, there were some problems.
We had some, well, they did not follow the contract that was written and then they were...
And then they wanted all this extra stuff and it turned into a nightmare. But, and that was not kids in our school. That's not our kids that were participating. So you're telling me that the Old North State League are kids that are currently playing, like in our, in our neighborhoods?
We have kids from the area that have requested if we were starting up the Skyler Wags or Daredevils again, and we're not doing that. And Old North State is completely separate from CPL.
It's an upper league.
Correct.
Yeah, it's not, it's not all of our...
Right, I understand that, but I mean...
There's the potential for...
I want to make sure we're not excluding...
Graduates from Dare County to be able to play with that league.
So explain to me again. So the owners named to be determined of the baseball team? Oh, the baseball, they haven't named the baseball team.
They don't have a owner.
Who are the owners?
We don't have an owner yet. Old North State says they have someone very interested, but it's, again, a matter of making it...
So this is kind of us, us being able to do this, waive that policy and do this for this amount of time is why, is holding up the, somebody taking the shot at doing this?
Correct.
Is that what you're telling me?
Correct.
And if you also read the motion, will be saying that the superintendent, we would give him the authority to sign the lease agreements and follow the Board policy, but we could also add to that, he could give us updates between now and May. So certainly that would be...
And I built into the lease that, of course, some exit clause with the help of our attorneys and facilities use would be applied for each year.
And I also want to point out, Miss, Brian has worked very hard with Ian on this. So this is not something that's just came out tonight. This has been back and forth with Brian and, and Ian for some time. If I remember correctly, I think Ian sent it to me the night of last meeting.
That was when we finally got our heads together.
Finally got, finally got the work from Brian and I said, just hold off one month if we can do that. And he said, no problem. So it has been back and forth, Dare County Schools and Pointer Springs.
And this, this lease is written by myself and vetted by Brian. This wasn't something from Old North State. So it has our best interest.
Yeah, so if we do a multi-year one, then we, if there's an event that happens that causes an issue, whatever, we have the right to terminate that contract?
Wouldn't be terminate, we would, we would have the right to, our event would take precedent. They wouldn't be able to, they would have to move their event. Is that the way? Our events take precedent over what they're trying to do.
Correct. And I would work with everybody to make sure we could avoid that.
Yeah.
Could it be an annual lease, renewable yearly up to three years?
That's how I believe I have it written or not annual. The lease itself, it will be for three years, but they still will submit a facilities use every year with their schedule, with their plan and coaching and whatnot.
The problem is, is our policy.
Okay.
The problem is what?
The trouble is our policy.
Right, right.
But, and the amount of money that it takes to put into it if we...
Right, nobody wants, I, I totally see that. But I kind of am with Susan too, like what precedent are we setting? Is this something we need to consider adjusting our policy?
Well...
No, 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 I'm saying adjusting a policy that allows us to do such things as this, and I guess Rachel, this question's for you, but still gives us protection. I don't know what that looks like, but I'm saying is...
But the way I, the way I'm reading it is we're giving the superintendent the authority to sign a lease agreement, so he's going to see what this lease agreement is before it actually happens.
But the lease agreement that you're giving me permission to sign is for three years, renewable each year or facilities use. Well, we're telling, we're telling them that they can use it for three years, they just have to reapply at the beginning of every year. That, that's what the lease is saying.
But it still requires waiving a policy and that's...
Correct.
Right, because we only do one year.
The concern for me on that is the precedent that sets on what if we have somebody that wants to use our auditorium or they want to use this during the summer months? You, you, you see what I'm saying? I'm, I'm fine, like I get the baseball thing. I think it's great. I have no problem with that. But I want to know, what is this opening us up to in the future that could cause us a problem?
Can we say it's a one-time waive, waiver?
Well, and you can, you can do it on a case-by-case basis. So if you had another opportunity that you, the Board decide, you can decide, it's your policy. You could, so you can decide when you want to waive it, when you don't. So if another, other people may ask, but by waiving this policy for this lease, you're not waiving your policy in general. That policy would remain in play until you, until the Board adopted an amendment to that policy.
But I understand that, but then are people going to come back and say, hmm, you waived it for these guys?
Exactly.
You won't waive it for us.
Exactly.
Yeah, and there's no eight, like magic eight ball to tell us whether that will happen. It's possible. That people will know that this is coming out and they might ask about it.
Okay. So how can we, how can we, I'm not yelling in this, I feel like I'm yelling. Can't you turn this thing down? I probably don't need to turn it on. I could probably just...
No, we're going to have it recorded.
Got to have it on.
So is there a way to okay this now and still change the policy?
We're not changing the policy.
Not changing, I know. We're going to, if we want to prevent this from happening again or prevent it from being some, do you understand what I'm saying?
Would not recommend changing the policy. All, all you've got to do is for this lease, waive the policy for this lease. You're not, you're not eliminating the policy or, or amending the policy. You're just waiving the policy for this lease only.
I completely understand that, but it's like she said, if we do that for this and we don't do something to the policy that gives us something later, if we had time, go ahead.
I was going to say waive the policy and make a statement for the superintendent to review the policy over the next.
Well, that's what we'll have to do, Ian, if we go with this. If we waive this, then once our new board members sworn in, we'll have then to create another whole new policy committee and have them bring this up into, into their committee meeting of this policy to review it and look into it with our attorneys and then come back and make a recommendation to the new Board. But right now, this task is what we've got to do tonight is what, if we're going to approve this, waive it for this, this use only and then go from there. Mr. Chair, if I may, the policy that you have is a good policy. Yes. I, I, I don't see any, anything that, that I would recommend changing in the policy. So let's, let's take this scenario off the table and let's say second reading. You have a policy that you're going to have a first reading and a second reading of every policy that you approve. Sometimes you waive second reading. The policy didn't go away. You just decided in that incident that you were not going to use second reading. You're doing the same thing here.
And I understand that. I, I, I totally understand that. But I'm saying, which I, obviously I'm not saying clear.
I, I can't, I can't tell you that somebody's going to come, not going to come up and say, well, you did it for the, I, I can't say that.
But since we're, but since we're, but since we're not changing the policy...
Right. I, I, I mean, I'm comfortable with giving this to myself.
I'll give the superintendent the authority.
Yes.
Make a motion.
Yes. Go ahead. Yeah, I'm reluctant about it. I understand the, the urgency for this request, but I can't say that it doesn't make me...
I agree.
Doesn't make me a little uncomfortable moving forward. Not because of this situation, but because of other situations that could arise.
Yes.
And so I'll, I'll, I'll get behind this for the, so you guys can move forward with the baseball team and all that, but since I'm not going to be here, it's making me really uncomfortable.
So do you, Ron?
So...
How soon do they need an answer? Yesterday or?
Yes.
Yesterday, yeah.
That's why, oh, the point for the last...
And I don't want to, and I don't want to hold up an opportunity that, because obviously this is a good opportunity. Obviously this is a great thing. I just, so I'll, I'll, I'll make the motion, but I'm going to say this.
Before you make the motion, so if, I apologize, but for your security, if the Board is not comfortable tonight making that, then table it for next, to the next meeting. We've been working on this for two months and we've run it, you know, through legal to get to the point that we're at right now. But I wouldn't for any stretch of the imagination, put you in a position that you're not comfortable doing something, particularly with members leaving the Board and coming on the Board in this situation. So if, if you're not comfortable making that recommendation tonight, table it till, till December.
Mr. Chair, might I make a suggestion?
Sure, please.
So I think, I know that Ian needs an answer and I know he has. So you are scheduling a special meeting on the 22nd of November?
Ah, yeah.
Which puts you about, you know, puts you less than two weeks from tonight. If Ian thinks they could hold off that long, then what I think you could do is Board members, if you could submit your questions or concerns with, by a certain amount of time, we can either review the contract and make sure that those concerns have been addressed and we could, you know, be confident representing to you that everything you've brought up has been considered in the contract. Or if they can't be addressed, then you would know that in advance of being able to, you would have an opportunity to ask those questions and know that in advance of meeting. But we would need, we'd need to get your questions pretty quickly and then go ahead and look at all your concerns pretty quickly.
How long is this, have these discussions with these people been going on?
Since last school year.
Since last school year?
Yes, ma'am.
Then how come we're just hearing about?
Do you, do you, do you already have some sort of contracts, preliminary contract that they've written up?
We have our lease agreement, that's it.
Okay.
But nobody's signed anything yet because we have to do this before that.
Can you, can you send us a copy of that?
Absolutely.
I think it's linked.
And we, we have two Board members that will be with us after December and they need to hear this also. So I think the 22nd might be a, a good date if they could...
Do you feel comfortable that the people, that they're going to be okay with that though? Is this going to make or break a deal?
I think they're really excited to be here. So I think it should be fine. I can't speak on their behalf. I know they're excited to be here, so I think that another couple of weeks won't hurt.
And, and in response to your question while you were just hearing about this, the, the discussions that started last year was centered around what's the possibility that y'all would be open to this? They didn't have a league. They, they weren't affiliated with a league at that point in time. All of those pieces had to be put together on their end before they could make a request of us to be able to use the facility. That's where we got to September, August, September, that they, they were like, well, you know, what's the possibility of using the facility? We've been back and forth with legal in looking at the, the terms of the lease and got it down from five to 10 years to three years. And that's, that's why we're bringing it to you now.
And I, honestly, I sat on it for a month or two as well because of bad taste in my mouth from previous experience.
From previous years, right. Okay, so I, so can we table this till the special called meeting on the 22nd? And I feel, I feel very confident that we can get to a resolution on this and we can make it happen. It just has to be done right.
Absolutely.
So my question about the lease is, in the event that the leaseee, let's say they're not taking care of the field, they're trashing the field, we want to be able to terminate that contract when that happens. Because we want to make sure whoever's running on that field is taken care of and it's, so that's my, that's my question for that, if being that lease. And I, I'll go back. The discussions that we had initially were exactly that.
No.
We, we did not want to get back into a situation where we're having to take care of something that should be taken care of by someone else.
And that was built into the lease as well, at least in some wording.
Well, you can assure them we will have an answer on the 22nd.
Okay.
So do we have a motion to table?
Appreciate their patience.
We have a motion to table?
Table this, I moved, I moved, we table this till the 22nd.
Motion by Ms. Balance, second by Ms. Bothwell. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries, we'll table it to November 22nd.
All right.
Thank you.
Don't go far.
I'm not.
As you recall, back in September, we brought a discussion about having Mr. Adams go out, reach out to our appraisal firm for the properties that we have here on Roanoke Island, which he, he'd done so. And the information that was in your packet, it came back with a cost of $14,000 to have this firm to appraise those 17 pieces of property. And with that threshold, it was out of the league of Mr. Bassnight signing off, so we had to bring this back to the Boards for approval. If the pleasure of the Board is to move forward with this, it would be the cost of $14,000 to have this property appraised. And when we gave this information to the public and to Mr. Adams, we did not and still do not have plans for this property, other than what we want to see what it's valued at, what it's appraised at. And praises last how long, Mr. Adams, about 12 months?
If you're lucky.
Okay. That's what I'm saying. So spending $14,000 for something that we don't...
Going to January 6th.
Don't have a plan of what we're going to do. So it's, it's the pleasure of the Board of how we want to move forward. Do we still want to have this property appraised? And if so, we'll have to make a motion to do that and cost a tune of 14,000.
Where would the money come from, the fund balance?
Yep. Initially, I, I answered yes, but we would work to, to be able to cover that from other funds.
Can we cover that from other funds?
It'd be, I mean...
I mean...
If this only lasts a year, why would we do this now?
If we're not planning on selling or doing anything with that property...
Because it could all change when we want to.
We may not want it.
And I think it was the board's query was really about what do we have and what's at worst.
What's at worst.
Not that you had planned to do anything with the property. So until... I mean, you can find that out for $14,000, but then the next time you decide to do something with it, you're going to have to...
We're going to get a price again.
I would say in light of the fact that we don't have plans and we have four, three new board members coming on, I think I say we table it, let them get in here and get... So I would say...
Okay.
Thank you for your work on it.
Absolutely.
So do we have a motion to table?
Not table, but...
Well, not approve it. We don't even need a motion. We don't even do anything.
All right. She said table, and that's why I want to make sure.
We don't need to do anything, really?
Nope. We're good.
No, I think your previous vote was to give authority to go get an appraisal, but at this point, you've decided not to move forward with that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is consideration approval of the revised school improvement plan for Manial Elementary School and First Flight Elementary School for the school year 2024-2025. So Ms. Bothwell and your team would come up front, please.
Ian, you want to come back up front for any reason?
I can tag you. I can tag you. All right, so good evening again, board members, board chair, and superintendent Bassnight. So I am blessed and honored to be able to turn this over to two of our principals. So we have Sarah Fletcher here from First Flight Elementary and Curtis Price here from Manial Elementary, and they are going to share a lot of the wonderful things that they're doing and how they are being very purposeful, specific, and targeted with the work that they're doing. And so I will hand it over because I like to go in alphabetical order. I'm going to turn it to Sarah first for First Flight Elementary School.
Ladies first.
Mr. Chairman, board, Mr. Bassnight, community. Thank you for this opportunity for me to share the awesome work we're doing at First Flight Elementary. I'm a little short, so I'm going to push this down for myself. So I am going to be brief and targeted. I'm going to go over the five goals that we have as a school improvement plan for First Flight Elementary, and then I'm going to briefly talk about some action items that tie directly to our goals. I am not going to be able to go over all of the action items because I only have five minutes. I would need an hour. I also wanted to say that this is an ongoing plan, so I encourage you to continue to look at our school improvement plan because we plan throughout the year, but this is just a great start. So our first goal, it's important to us as administrators, Ms. Weeks is the assistant principal who's here as well. We work very closely together as a team and I appreciate her being here with me. We believe that it is important for distributive leadership in all schools. Any organization, everyone should be part of the school improvement process. So currently with our school improvement team, we do have representation from all grade levels, as well as office, as well as EC, as well as instructional assistants, and we have five parents on our team, but we believe that the whole school should be involved in school improvement process. So we have a goal that started last year, but we're continuing this goal because we're going to be growing, and I'm going to read the goal to you. All staff will be active contributors to the school improvement process. Focus groups meet once a month and create a way for all staff to be a part of the school improvement process. Each focus group creates action items for school-wide improvement tied to key indicators and communicates these action items to all staff in our weekly newsletter, at staff meetings, and school improvement team meetings. Focus groups consist of PBIS, JOY, MTSS, literacy, and STEAM. And we do have representation from all certified staff and most of our classified staff. We do it after school, so that's kind of voluntary, but I'd say 90% of them are a part of it. Action items that you're going to see in our school improvement plan that align with this. So you are not going to see Ms. Fletcher and Ms. Weeks' name all over our plan because that would mean we're the only ones doing the work, and that's not how it works at First Flight Elementary School. So you're going to see names from lots of different grade levels. You're going to see community members' names. You're going to see office staff. You're going to see, you will see us as well. You're going to see interventionists. And I just want to talk briefly about some of the action items our focus groups have done for our school and will continue. So JOY focus group, you're going to see action items. They plan monthly luncheons. Their purpose is to grow our culture, grow our relationships. The closer we are as a team, the more we get to know each other, the better we work together. We have luncheons monthly. We have after-school meetups as a staff. Wellness is important to us. JOY focus group does Monday workouts. Sarah Patton does that, our PE teacher, every Monday. Staff can participate. Rebecca Head, a kindergarten teacher, she does weekly yoga classes, trying to find ways for us to self-care. We need to take care of ourselves so we can do best for our kids. And we also have monthly book clubs. Our librarian does that, Stacy Hamp. Our literacy focus group, they planned our literacy night, which was talked about. Thank you for sharing that in those notes. It was a very successful night. That was all teacher-led, as well as they're currently working on planning our One Book One School, which will be in January. All teacher-led and all focused on what's best for our kids and its representation across grade levels, which is great because then we can touch all, what all kids need. STEAM focus group, they're working on STEAM projects. So we're doing STEAM projects in December. We'll have our STEAM night in January. Teachers are leading that process as well. Amy Forbes, she's a second-grade teacher. Yesterday, we got her a substitute and she went to PLCs and did backwards planning with teachers. We supported, but she really took the lead. Penny Pugh, our fifth-grade teacher, is going to do that also at third through fifth grade. So just capitalizing on, we're all leaders at First Flight Elementary. We will invite you to that STEAM night. It's always, it was great last year, so I'll let you guys know. It's in January. Our PBIS focus group, they're leading World Kindness Day on November 13th. You'll see action items that are refining our PBIS. Living the KSCRP UA is very strong. I think you probably have all heard that, but we need to refine our processes, so we continue to grow. And then our MTSS focus group, they're creating ways for our parents to be more involved in the MTS process. Parents should be at the table. So their last focus group, they created a parent letter. They, we decided as a team, when's the best time to bring parents in to be part of those conversations? And we've already had a couple of meetings with parents involved. So a lot of growth, all created by teacher leaders, by staff leaders. The next three goals I'm going to talk about really tie to growing our student growth, meeting kids where they are and making sure we have the resources. So students, we believe we got to meet kids where they are to grow. If they're learning above where their level is, they're not doing a lot of learning. That's very frustratingal. So I'm going to read the three goals and then I'll talk about some action items. Our first goal, staff will be provided with more time to analyze data and collaborate on next steps with teachers, interventionists, EL, AIG, EC, support staff, and administration all at the table. Substitutes will be used during BOI, MOI, and check-in windows to provide all staff with extra time to analyze data as a collaborative team. We've learned that we need more time. PLCs are 45 minutes. By the time you go to the bathroom and you drop your kids off, you have 30 minutes. It's not enough time to dig deep into data and create plans, core plans, and intervention plans. So we already had our first BOI and we're doing a check-in mini-data day next Tuesday. Third through fifth will have two hours for us all to sit together. Another goal is FFES. We'll provide all students with targeted instruction based on the analysis of USNS, M-class, check-ins, core phonics survey, and classroom comment assessments. This will be a 30 to 60-minute intervention or enrichment time to increase our student growth and meet all students' academic needs. First grade and second grade are following the walk-to-read model. They are getting 60 minutes because decoding skills is very foundational and we want to really build up our kids in those younger grades. And our third goal that kind of aligns here is professional development. So professional development will be universal for all staff from August to December. Administration will work alongside all staff to develop the professional development plan from December to June through needs assessments, conversations from super observations, and school improvement team collaborations. So we have planned our PD up to December, but our teachers will be with us planning the rest. We want to personalize it for them, and the only way we can do that is if we sit down together. We've been doing super observations as one of our requirements, and it's been a really awesome time because we've gotten to sit and be in lots of classes and talk about what we need as a staff.
What's a super observation?
So a super observation is observation that we must do to all certified staff because of our report card, and it's a way, I actually see it as a very positive thing. It takes time, but it focuses us in the classroom right away. We're seeing things. We're having conversations. Chrissy and I are doing it together. We have pre-conferences first where we have discussions that revolve around their PDP goal because we want to help them with their own goals. We do an observation and then for 45 minutes for all certified. And then we'll have our post-conferences, those start next week, where we will develop our next plans for professional growth. It's all about growth. We're here to help our teachers get better. Some of the actions you're going to see that relate to these three goals, BOI and MOI data days with substitute coverage. You're going to see check-in mini-data days, also with substitute coverage. You're going to see flyer time interventions and enrichment. We started that October 7th. You're going to see UFLI training for all certified staff and classified instructional assistants. UFLI is the intervention program we use for decoding skills. And you're also going to see a creation of a First Flight Elementary professional development plan. Feedback we had from our TWC surveys as well as FAMAS is we needed a clearer vision of what our process is for professional development. So we really, this summer, Chrissy and I worked really hard, not only making sure professional development matches when you need it. Sometimes we get it and we don't do it for a month, so we really aligned. We had UFLI training two weeks before they had to do it, so it's fresh in their mind. And then we have ongoing professional development to support them. Our support staff is great and they jump right in, and we're just constantly helping each other. All right, and our fifth goal, all students, staff, and families will participate in KSCRP and Zones of Regulation as our school-wide PBIS to decrease student referrals, provide tools for students and staff to discuss and reflect on emotions and coping skills, and create a school where everyone lives the KSCRP way every day. Action items you will see in our plan, Zones of Regulation book study. We do school-wide Zones of Regulation, which is using colors to teach children how to talk about emotions and align those with coping skills. It also helps us as adults. We will be in meetings and someone will say, I'm getting a little yellow right now, and it helps us communicate as well. Emotions are real and we have to feel them and talk about them, and that helps us grow and kids need those tools. You're also going to see this year, we're doing a Positive Mindset Habits for Teachers book study. It's not just for teachers, even though that's what the title says. All staff are doing it. It's a way for us to stay positive in what we do. When we stay positive, it helps the whole school. And what we do is hard, and sometimes it's hard to stay positive. So this book is a great way for us to work as a team on keeping that positive mindset at the forefront. You're also going to see action items to refine our awesome KSCRP process. That was something I was very impressed when I first joined First Flight, how strong their KSCRP way is, but we're going to make it stronger. So you're also going to see action items to refine that. I thank you for this opportunity to be here, to tell you all, all about what we're doing at First Flight Elementary means a lot to us, and I encourage you to stop on in, keep looking at our plan, and come see the awesome work we're doing at First Flight Elementary.
Thank you, Sarah.
Sarah, that was tremendous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board, just so you know, something that we started at the beginning of last school year is providing individual schools with professional development funds so that that school can target where those funds need to go instead of the district telling the schools what they needed to target. And what Sarah was just talking about was really going back to our staff and saying, where do you need professional development? Where do we need to spend this money to get the biggest bang for our buck in this building? And I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Any questions for me and the board member? Sir?
Thank you. Please come and see us.
We will.
Thank you.
Good evening, board. Chairman Tweedy, Vice Chair Woody, Board of Education, Superintendent Mr. Bassnight, Ms. Georgia Sellers, Ms. Rachel Hitch, gentlemen. It is a pleasure and an honor to come before you this evening and talk about the school improvement plan for Manial Elementary School. With only one year removed from being in the top 10% of the state and exceeding student growth in tested grades 35, as an instructional team, we have reflected on current data sets and have thus identified key focus areas that we believe will better allow us to set core systems and standards in place so we can annually assure and equip all of our students to better their best, thus demonstrating our school vision of rising to any challenge. With that being said, this year's elected school improvement team, which is made up of parents, classified staff, certified teachers, have determined the following three improvement goals. First, MES will offer an induction program to support new teachers in their first years of teaching. This goal aligns with the district's goal of recruitment and retention. We all know how important recruitment and retention is in Derrick County. At Manial Elementary School, we want to put focused attention on recruiting effective practitioners, engaging them in high-quality PD, and in turn, keeping them in Derrick County for both our students and our community stakeholders. When we look at our personal school data at Manial Elementary School, out of our current 19 third to fifth-grade teachers, only five of them have been teaching the same NC standard course of study in the building for three consecutive years. So we know that focusing our efforts on intentional employee engagement, collaborative lesson preparation, and standard alignment will be keys in contributing to the closing achievement gap for all student groups. Additional action steps that we have been taking to address this goal with district support can be seen by the hiring of an effective teacher and learning facilitator who can work directly both with beginning-year teachers and other staff as needed within the building based on daily needs and attention. And this is rotational efforts as we're tiered based on instructional support needs. And this is just one of the many resources we have in place to support our community of practitioners. Others include setting into motion highly effective instructional expectations and norms around what we call Five to Thrive best practices for a highly effective Manial Elementary School teacher. Not to mention the teacher playbooks that we deployed this year to better organize school-wide expectations, scholarly articles, student data, and professional development plans. These playbooks have already been put into action through instructional-focused staff gatherings, PLCs, and K2 and 35 vertical planning days. Our second goal is that we will effectively implement in grades 35 unit pre-tests and post-tests where results will be reviewed by the instructional team and teachers so that we can make better decisions about curriculum and instructional plans for all students. These standard-aligned unit pre-test and post-test assessments have been in the works since last January after establishing a data task force team made up of teachers, administrators, and instructional specialists so that we could effectively prepare and train staff with the resources to fruitfully use these in-class assessments to better gain student background knowledge, adjust instruction through enrichment intermediation, while similarly giving students standard reps so that they are more prepared at the end of the year when they are asked to sit and take a summative student achievement assessment. As an instructional team, we have begun to see the fruits of this initiative and thus have celebrated student growth and cohort growth and achievement via individual teacher conferences and staff meetings. The third goal this year pertains to being more targeted, purposeful, and specific with our family and student engagement opportunities. At Manial Elementary School, we are committed to helping every child reach their full potential and know that making that sincere and intentional connection with our families will only help strengthen our educational partnership. So this year, we have asked grade levels to collect data, then create targeted, grade-level-specific enrichment nights for our families. We have begun taking action toward this, where most recently, we conducted a Title I's Needs Assessment Survey at our first Coffee with the Principal session this past Friday so that we can better hear from our parents about what they need, what they like, and in which ways we can better support their child's learning. We do believe that little things matter, so we are putting again emphasis on maintaining initiatives that continue to help keep the family in connection at home at the forefront, like something as simple as birthday books from the principal and books in the breezeway, which both ensure that students are taking home free books so that not only can they be excited to read or to be read to, but that they can also remember how proud we are to be a part of their scholarly journey. In conclusion, we believe these actions are just the beginning of what is to come at Manial Elementary, where we are looking forward to end-of-the-year results, where all student groups will meet or exceed growth measures in reading, math, and science while simultaneously increasing reading and math proficiency in grades 35 by 15%. We do know that the EOGs are just one score, taken at one time by only half of our student population, and it doesn't tell the whole story, but we also believe in all of our students and all of our teachers and know the potential of what we can accomplish collectively when we have a focused attention on continuous instructional improvement. As principal of Manial Elementary School, I am blessed to be working alongside so many highly effective educators who believe... School, I am blessed to be working alongside so many highly effective educators who believe our students can indeed rise to any challenge. And I look forward to having our students help us tell the history and the story of what they're making at Manio Elementary School. Thank you again for allowing me to present. I'm open to any question that you may have.
Any questions?
No, but I'll make a statement because, you know, I do that. The look on your face and the look on your face while these two are talking says it all. These two are so proud of what's going on. You can see it. It's beautiful. So I know you're obviously being supported.
Hundred percent. I mean, you guys are supporting us.
I was going to say, Curtis and Sarah, please go back to your teachers and let them know they have our support. Sorry they've got to go through so much more work that they already do each and every day. And I do believe they're going to make it at the end of next year. And all the dedication and hard work behind them, we're behind you.
Outside of that, but even like that great, you're creating a culture in your schools. You guys are creating a culture that they can. Like you, it's just so beautiful to see. And I'm sorry, I'm going to have to see it from over there, but I'm still going to be there because I still want to see it.
And also, I'd like to make a comment on Mr. Bassnight earlier. The funds that they give to the schools, we're not having administrators at the central office telling them or showing where to put it. They're there to work with you and they're behind you to help you each and every way. So that's the good part.
It does feel good to say yes. When you have confidence in telling your staff that we offer PD and people are seeking, or if you're modeling PD to your staff and they're going out to get it and then coming back to present, or like having them on school improvement team leading action items, it's really fantastic to see. Then put it in place and then showcasing it. Times of Hannah Nash will come in in the building and take photos and videos. It's a special place and we know how important our education is here and with our kids and what they need. And we need highly effective teachers coming in and doing the hard work. And then we produce scholars like this sitting next to us. And that's our opportunity and our job. So it's a pleasure to work with you guys.
Thank you, Curtis.
Yes, sir.
So with that said, we have a motion on the floor.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the revised...
I had it on tonight. Hello.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the revised school improvement plans for Manio Elementary School and First Flight Elementary School for the 2024-2025 school year as presented.
I have a motion on the floor by Ms. Bothwell.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Woody. Any further discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Can I make a comment really quickly?
You certainly can.
Okay. So I want to thank these two and their entire teams because when you get the designation of low performing, that is a soul crusher. And that can easily turn into a, you know, woe is me, we're just, how are we, you know, we're doing the best we can. But these two and their leadership teams and their assistant principals and just the school in general have truly, I mean, I know Manny is rise up. I mean, they are rising up from the ashes. And I truly can't wait to see, like, it makes me almost tear. Like, I was sitting there almost tearing up and I was listening to them because I see the intentionality behind what each of those schools are doing. And it's all of our schools truly. But I think when you have that designation, to be able to get up, come to work, and do the hard work, not the hard work, the hard work to make a difference in kids' lives is very, very difficult. And these two and their teams, I cannot tell you how much I love them all because they kill it every day and they show up and that's what matters. So thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And thank you.
So, and I truly mean that. So, thank you, guys.
Well said, Katie.
This concludes our business portion tonight. I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Emerson if you'd like to make some comments.
Well, I'm going to miss you three board members, but I'm excited to work with the new ones. And I'm very happy about the lunch numbers going up in my school because that was one thing I was like super worried about, seeing kids not on lunch. But now those numbers are going up. I'm super excited. Wrote one of my college essays about it, so.
There you go.
I feel we're moving in the right way towards success and I'm very happy to be a part of it. Thank you for all, for all you do.
Thank you.
I'm going to be sad to see some of you guys go. It's been a pleasure, but I am excited to work with the new board members that will be joining us. The renderings of the early college looked awesome. I think that's going to turn out really great and I'm glad that we're moving in the right direction on that. Other than that, great meeting, guys.
Mr. Payne?
Thank you, Mr. Twitty. I want to thank Susan Bothwell, Carl Woody, and Maryline Balance for their hours that they put in, the hard work they put in. Mr. Twitty mentioned earlier that it's just not a meeting or two a month. It's a ton of work. So thank y'all for your work. I appreciate you guys. And the rendering of the early college looked great. And Mr. Bassnight, I have my ticket for Harry Potter all ready. Thank you guys for your hard work.
I don't know if I can go next. Well, the good news is, is after December 2nd, you're only going to be able to limit me to five minutes. So that's, I mean, three minutes. Three minutes. I'm only going to have three minutes. I don't even know where to begin. So I might be able to sneak an extra two. Nope.
You got a new one.
I'll say that I already have my ticket for Harry Potter too. I'll be there on Sunday. And I'm going to the veterans thing that Keith Durham, and for those of you that don't know him, he's an amazing man. And what he's done for Cape Hatteras is just, I just, and continues to be in awe of his dedication to the students down there. But he started back when my son was in ninth grade, when he first came here. He started this veterans' breakfast and he has the guys in Hatteras. They all get together and they see, to see them all sitting. Some of these guys, these veterans only see each other once a year. And they, it's like they came together and it's like they never, they never stopped talking. And so I'm really excited to see that tomorrow. So this is the end of eight years. And it's been really amazing. We've been through a lot of really tough times and we've seen a lot of phenomenal times. I've met some great people along the way. One of my best friends in the world that the first time we met sat and said, someone asked me after I met with her, they said, so what do you think of Susan? Did you, yeah, I said, yeah, I just met her. We just had lunch. What do you think? I said, well, she's just, she's pretty much just a little bit older than a version of me. So we might be in trouble. But we've had some amazing times. Dare County Schools is an amazing place. And what our kids are, have access to and the love and support that they get from this community is like no place I've ever seen. And I come from a family of teachers. My sister's a teacher and what she goes through is just, it doesn't happen here. It's, the teachers love their children like their own. And it's been an absolute honor to be a part of it. We've been through a lot of crazy stuff. But at the end of this, there's two people in this room that I started with and that I'm going to end with. And
Oh, yeah.
I'm still going to call you. And David and I, we ran together the first time and have an amazing friendship. And I'm very grateful for that. But you're not done with me yet. I'm just, just going to be meeting on the first Monday in the morning now. And I thank you all for your support. And I'm going to be cheering you on. And if there's anything you need, my phone number will not change. So, thank you. And I'm done.
Well, I'd like to start off by saying thank you to this board for working together to accomplish a lot of things in the last several years. Some of those things were the creation of the student advisors. You guys are doing an outstanding job. We secured $1 million in teacher housing, $1.6 million in teacher and staff salary supplements, free school lunch for all students. And my big thing is early college, is moving forward. But I truly agree that we wouldn't be able to do any of these without the leadership of Steve Bassnight and his folks. It's his staff that makes all this stuff work. So I would like to give big thanks for Steve and his staff. And that's all I got.
Great. Okay. Bittersweet moment for me today. I'm really going to miss this a lot. I really enjoyed my time on the board. I came on at a very difficult time, for sure, with COVID and all the backlash we had from that and all the interesting things that we had go on in central office. But finding, being on the committee, finding a new superintendent was a giant eye-opener for me. And it was, I'm honored that I was on it. And I think we absolutely made the best choice ever. Sorry. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Because seeing the change in the attitude of all the staff and the teachers and central office after the Steves came on board, I'm sorry that Steve Blackstock isn't here tonight. But it's made, I think, a huge change and big difference for the kids because I see a happiness and a joyfulness and more involvement with the kids in getting along and doing well in school. I think the improvement that we've seen in the last couple of years has been really, really great. I've really enjoyed working with all the central staff people. I'm not going to name them all because I'll probably forget somebody. But you know, you guys, I love you tons. You've been great. And I'm going to miss Georgia the most, probably. You're the best person in the world. And Rachel, I'm going to really miss you too. Okay. And I'm going to miss the student advisors, even the new ones. I had so much fun with them last year and I was hoping to get to know you guys better this year because I think you're awesome. And I think it was one of the best things we ever did for Dare County Schools. I would thank all the commissioners, but, oh, sorry, but there's none here at the moment. But I do appreciate all that they have done for Dare County Schools. I don't think we could do as much if we didn't have the support that we do have from our commissioners. Big congratulations to the new Board of Education members. Justin, you're the only one here, but you're going to be awesome. And I think Kenny and Lisa are also going to be a big asset to this, to this board. When you are sworn in, I hope you pay attention to the words that you will be reciting. It's, what you need to do is every day, I think, what you are doing, do it for the kids. That's why you're here. And I hope that when you have an opportunity to choose a new chairman, that you think very carefully and choose wisely. That's a very important job. I've had, made some lifelong friends while sitting on this board. For that, I will always be grateful. And in closing, I thank everyone in this room and those that aren't here at the moment for allowing me this opportunity. And you probably haven't seen the last of me, so just saying. Okay, that's it.
Mr. Bassnight, any comments?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I do want to share one thing. I won't go into a lot of detail, but Emerson, I think you submitted an application this week. Good luck. Let us know how it goes. Wonderful. To, to the board, on behalf of our staff, I want to say thank you. We're able to do what we're trying to do in Dare County Schools because of what you've done. And you should be very proud of that. To each of you, I personally want to thank you for taking a chance and taking an old guy out of retirement because you thought he may still have a little bit left. I appreciate that. But more than that, I appreciate the fact that you care about the students in Dare County. And you have put that first and foremost, time and time again. And I appreciate you. And I want you to know on their behalf that I thank you for your time and enormous amounts of time that you've put in to doing what was best for students. Dare County Schools owes you a big debt of gratitude and I appreciate you very much. So thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Tonight, the advisory, the students showing us highlights for each school, as always, is really, really nice to see. It's just a small portion. There's so much that goes on in our schools. They could take the whole night and do highlights for what Dare County Schools is offering in each building. It's unbelievable. And taking the time, going by and seeing different things that take place is, is really nice. And it just shows that the heart from the staff is there for it. They want it to be like that. So thank you for sharing the, certainly looking for in the future. I know. This has been a great board. Actually, for eight years, it's been an awesome board. Some has gone, some has come on. The new ones here, two of them not able to make it tonight. It is a true team. We do work together. We have our opinions and things may think different. But at the end of the day, it's just like Mr. Bassnight always says, what's best for the students and staff in Dare County Schools. And that's what this board looks at each and every day. When we come here and make a decision, we review the documents. We see what's going on and we'll communicate with Mr. Bassnight so he can get the information from his staff so we can make a clear decision for what's best for our students and staff. The hard-working board members, lot of hours, as I said first. It's not just a nightly visit to come here to present to you. It's homework on our, on our side too. So Susan, Woody, Maryline, thank y'all for the dedication. As I said earlier, it's awesome. And we've had done some very good accomplishments over eight years, over the four years. It's really good. And I'd like to also just say a shout out to the community of Dare County for allowing me to come back and serve another four years. It's an honor. I don't take it lightly. I really do. I believe in Dare County Schools. So with that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I have one more thing I need to say.
Okay.
Of course. Just one more thing. This is it.
Can I interrupt you a second?
No.
I just really want to.
One more thing that I need to say. What'd you say?
I just really want to.
Oh, yeah. So, you know, I served as chair and I've served as vice chair. And the most important role I ever served was when I served as the chair of the committee for the superintendent search. And the best decision I ever made on this board in the eight years I was here was that man right there. So I will stand by that. I will stand by that 10 times over. I swear to you, it is the best decision.
Can I interrupt you again?
No. But I'll finish on that. Motion to adjourn?
No. Please, please keep Mr. Blackstock and his family and your thoughts and prayers until we get him back as quickly as we can. So. So we have a motion by Ms. Balance.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Woody. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Meeting's closed.